B, Presentation of Possible Direction of Staff on Strategies the City Council May Want to Consider Implementing to Conduct the Business of the City During Council Meetings More Efficiently. Mr. Camarino.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council Members. The initial presentation on this item, which was requested by several council members for staff to research what strategies might be considered to more efficiently conduct the business of the city during council meetings, the initial presentation was on November the 14th. There was some requests for some additional information specifically regarding speaker registration requirements and whether the cities that were on the initial list or benchmark cities that we had on a list actually required those. We do have that information for you this evening. The topics that were covered at that November 14th meeting were to hold a workshop prior to the regular council meeting, present a limits on presentations, whether that be a limit on the number of slides, or the time limit, citizens' communications time and possibly revising that time, speaker registration forms and possibly revising the amount of time allotted for public hearings, those for and against. So this was a slide that was presented with regards to holding a workshop prior to the regular council meeting at a certain time beforehand to discuss a number of topics. However, there didn't appear to be interest in moving forward on this. In fact, I believe that the council wanted to look at possibly considering some of the other strategies and review of the impacts of those before considering moving forward on this one. Next slide, please. With regards to, oh, I'm sorry, one more. Back? Thank you. With regards to limits on presentations, some cities do limit presentations. They either limit the number of slides or the amount of time that the city allot for outside presentations. In fact, this presentation with, is a total of eight slides, but if you remove the title slide and the question slide is six slides, so it'll go pretty quickly for you this evening. Next, thank you. So this has been updated with the information requested by council. As you can see, of the eighteen, eighteen out of the twenty cities that are on this slide do require a speaker regis, do require speaker registration. Okay? The only one that doesn't is Flugerville and Seguin. And of the twenty, all but one do then provide a maximum time allowed for speakers at three minutes. The city of Seguin provides five minutes. So that was some additional information that was requested by the city council. So with regards to speaker registration forms, really the intention of this is to add some structure to public comments and will allow citizens to not state their address at the podium. So the way that this would work is the speaker would fill out a form prior, prior to, when they, when they show up, they would print their name, address, an agenda item that they wish to speak on. And, and that's helpful because there are, we have heard some concerns from some citizens about having to state their name and address at the podium. The speaker would then hand that registration form to the city secretary's office, who would then assist the mayor in grouping those speakers by subject. And then the mayor would have those speaker registration forms grouped by subject, have them available to be able to call upon those wishing to address the council when those items come up on the agenda. And then the speakers would then be allowed either up to the current five minutes or the three minutes depending on the council direction provided. Next slide, please. Another strategy that was presented was public hearings. Currently, we allow for thirty minutes for each side, for and against. And when you, when you actually do the math at five minutes, that really if all, if all of them take the five minutes, you get, you get six speakers. If you then revise that to possibly three minutes per speaker, then you could get up to ten speakers. At twenty minutes for each side, at five minutes, you get four speakers if they all take the five minutes, possibly six to seven speakers at three minutes for each side. Again, if this is just a strategy that was presented, some cities do limit the amount of time that they provide under public hearings, but certainly, as you can see in that list, all but one of those cities do then allow a maximum amount of time of three minutes for each, for each speaker. So the next steps, and certainly we can, we can continue to discuss this, but the next steps is that the city council could implement the strategies that don't require an ordinance revision, and there were several of those, and it's actually at the very top of each one of the slides, of the strategy slides. The second would be to direct staff to bring any of the strategies back for further discussion or possible ordinance revisions for those that only require the ordinance revisions. Certainly happy to answer any questions or gather additional information that the council may feel is necessary.
Mr. Camarino, if I could ask, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the given of the address at the lectern is actually an ordinance that we could amend, but it's part of an ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's why we realistically like tonight couldn't say suspend that because it's part of an ordinance, but we could be amended, correct?
That's my understanding. Val, is that correct?
Okay. It just, I think it's important, no, because I think we all kind of got educated on that ourselves, or at least I did, that it was actually part of an ordinance. It wasn't a thing of practice. The only thing I would add to this is if we move to some type of, of written request, written, excuse me, if a speaker writes information down, I would just ask that we request that, whether it's staff or the speaker, checks on the form if they're a city resident, if they're an ETJ or other. I believe everybody has a right to speak, but I think it's important when someone comes to lectern, and I personally don't care what their address is, but I do think it's important to understand if they're a city resident, if they're an ETJ resident, or they don't live in the community. They have all right to speak, and I'm not suggesting that we should take that right away, but I think, I personally like to know, once again, if they're in, which category they fall in.
Something I would like to address that was brought up at the initial presentation was the use of our technology for maybe an outside presentation. Right now, what we ask folks to do is to actually place their, they're, either they place their laptop, or they replace their iPad, or a sheet of paper, so that the projector can, can then project that onto the screen. We are working on a policy that they would then have to submit that to us electronically in advance of a council meeting, so that it gives our IT department an opportunity to scan it to ensure that there are no. At the very top of each one of the slides, of the strategy slides, the second would be to direct staff to bring any of the strategies back for further discussion or possible ordinance revisions for those that only require the ordinance revisions. Certainly happy to answer any questions or gather additional information that the council may feel is necessary.
Mr. Camarino, if I could ask, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the given of the address at the lectern is actually an ordinance that we could amend, but it's part of an ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that's why we realistically like tonight couldn't say suspend that because it's part of an ordinance, but we could be amended, correct?
That's my understanding. Val, is that correct? Thank you.
Okay. It just, I think it's important, no, because I think we all kind of got educated on that ourselves, or at least I did, that it was actually part of an ordinance. It wasn't a thing of practice. The only thing I would add to this is if we move to some type of, of written request, written, excuse me, if a speaker writes information down, I would just ask that we request that, whether it's staff or the speaker, checks on the form if they're a city resident, if they're an ETJ or other. I believe everybody has a right to speak, but I think it's important when someone comes to lectern, and I personally don't care what their address is, but I do think it's important to understand if they're a city resident, if they're an ETJ resident, or they don't live in the community. They have all right to speak, and I'm not suggesting that we should take that right away, but I think, I personally like to know, once again, if they're in, which category they fall in.
Something I would like to address that was brought up at the initial presentation was the use of our technology for maybe an outside presentation. Right now, what we ask folks to do is to actually place their, they're, either they place their laptop, or they replace their iPad, or a sheet of paper, so that the projector can, can then project that onto the screen. We are working on a policy that they would then have to submit that to us electronically in advance of a council meeting, so that it gives our IT department an opportunity to scan it to ensure that there are no. Before we install that onto our system. So we are, we are looking at that regardless of whatever the council decides to do.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Camarino?
Can you tell me what are the other ordinance, what are the other options here that are, where we would have to adjust an ordinance besides registration form?
Yes, sir. So the, okay, so the citizens' communication time, that would require revision of an existing ordinance, an amendment to an existing ordinance.
The, okay, right, the, you mean the individual like going from five to three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that the only other one? The public hearings is not ordinance related?
That would require of, an amendment to an existing ordinance as well.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have.
And what about the presentation limit? Is that just for city staff?
Presenta, that would, that does not require an ordinance amendment. That would just be sort of a, a policy or a business practice that we would implement.
So I don't know how we come to a consensus up here if we, but I would be in favor of moving from three, from five to three minutes for citizens' communication. I would also be in favor of public hearings going to twenty minutes, for and twenty minutes against. And I would definitely be also in favor of the speaker registration form, but given that we would restrict time, I would, I would want to see a random selection for order. That way, we're not selecting anybody, it's just randomly generated, and that way, people get an opportunity to speak based on a random.
Let me mention that the city council can also extend the amount of time that, that the citizens can actually speak to the city council by vote of the council. If you feel that it is an item that requires much more public input, then someone could make a motion to extend the amount of time for public input, and then you just move forward with that.
Yeah, I like that.
I'm not, I'm not sure how we would do the random selection. That's something that we've got to give some thought, I'm not.
Or, or it could be just, you know, in the order that the registration form was filed with staff.
I mean, I, that would be fine, I guess. Just something that's fair.
Any, any other feedback?
I got one. How would the registration play out? Is there a cutoff time before council, or can they at any point in time fill out a form, walk around and give it to the city secretary? How would that registration before speaking work?
Yeah, I also emailed you a sheet that looks like this. It actually provides more detail on what some of the processes that some of the cities have. Some of it is quite complex, some of it much more simpler. I would be looking for a simpler method and not have it so complicated, so that right up until the gavel is hit, I believe, or just at least a few minutes beforehand, so that it gives the city secretary an opportunity to work with the mayor on categorizing those by subject or agenda item. That's what I would suggest, and I'll certainly, I could propose some, you know, sort of some time limits on those things when I bring that, when I bring it back for consideration.
Thank you.
I like up to the gavel, especially since the only disadvantage to that would be that you're at the back of the list, and if we run out of time, then you may not get an opportunity to speak. But if there is time, then, you know, we definitely wouldn't want to impede anybody from participating.
Thank you for that presentation. I think, I can go along with my colleagues on the end there. I think the, the driving factor is, you know, I just think there's a, there's a level of inefficiency as we get going in this room, and, and if you have the eighteenth item on the agenda, is it getting the same attention from council? Because, I mean, people get tired, right? I mean, is it getting the same attention that the second item would be getting? And so while, while many of you may not be able to do the workshop, I thought today's workshop at four o'clock was, was great. I'd like to see staff presence, presentations at a, at a four o'clock time, time slot. You know, these take time. I mean, if, if Mr. Jewell speaks for thirty minutes, here's another thirty minutes, so we're an hour in, and, you know, folks are here for their item, and, and we need to be able to give it the full attention, give it, give it the full hundred percent that we have. So I don't know how your work schedules are. Mine, I could get here. I wouldn't necessarily want another Monday taken, second, third, and fourth Monday. I wouldn't want that taken up, but I could be here early. You know, I could be here a little earlier. I thought that was very effective, us meeting at four. We had two good workshops, and so I'm okay with that as well.
Counsel member Herta, I think we're kind of doing them anyway. Like, I mean, we haven't authorized them, but I mean, I feel like I've been at a workshop or two every week for the last eight weeks. So I mean, whether we move to do this officially, I mean, we're kind of doing it anyway already.
I'd like to kind of disagree with that. I think, looking at previous council people that had very, not control of their time, they couldn't make a lot of the meetings, and I know they've got a lot of criticism for them. Now I understand. I personally would rather come a Monday and a Tuesday for an hour and do a workshop on a Tuesday at six or seven o'clock versus trying to take half a day off from work or something like that. That's just my opinion. I mean, you guys have a flexibility in your schedules. I don't know if everybody, everybody does.
I think there's, I see both sides of the story. The other thing is also is our constituents, right? And then I realize some work days, some work nights. There's no magic answer either, right? But currently, people know that city government's business, generally speaking, minus some special workshops, there's at six o'clock. As much as some of my colleagues may go, are you serious? I would almost rather suggest another Monday. I know that that doesn't always work out well either there, but another Monday during the month. We're not commissioner's court, that's not a full-time job, we don't get that, but I'm just saying, on something like that. Or if we did workshops, I would just suggest we only limit it to, minus a special workshop, emergency situation, limited to one a month, not every, you know, two a month, if that makes any sense. Like, whether it's the second or the fourth Monday, that's the workshop, you know, something like that.
I like that idea as well. And, and I'm talking about, when I'm talking presentations, I'm talking about staff presentations. When maybe an applicant is up here giving a presentation about their business that they, they need rezoned, a time limit on that, I think we've just gave them discretion until they finished, and I think a time limit on that rather than a slide, a number of slides, I think just a time limit would, would be good, and just streamline this thing. But you're right, let's keep it simple. Let's not, let's not make something, you know, even more red tape, and then we make it worse than what we intended to do.
Certainly, the, the workshop prior to a council meeting is something that we can continue to discuss. It doesn't require an amendment to an existing ordinance, and so, but the others, we can certainly move forward on and get those implemented, whatever council decides to do, get those implemented as there's further discussion about workshops.
I know this isn't an official vote, but I mean, somehow we got to gain consensus. I would like to proceed in that manner.
I would agree with Councilman Campos on the major topics there. The workshop one, I still would like, I'd rather span it off instead of coming at four o'clock, or three o'clock, or two o'clock, and having to spend a whole day here, you know, let's, let's put it on a different day in the evening and make sure it's scheduled. That's what I would agree to.
So we shall, shall we continue to discuss that, that piece?
I think the direction, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, this is, there's no official vote here, but I think also some of this can be done in small steps, right? This is not an all or nothing, right? So I think there's not a, I don't gather there's a consensus on the workshop, but I could be wrong. But if we potentially implement some of those other things that have been mentioned, then see how that progresses and goes, and then address that later, or even, you know, more, more.
And I think people need to realize too, going from five to three minutes, we're still getting more people in. So they think it's, if they, some people thinks it's stifling, and we're trying to control it, but five minutes seems like a long time when we listen to some of the folks, keep repetitive. But I think if we can get more citizens to speak, the better that we can listen to a greater number of folks.
I would like to just mention, if they register to come talk, they don't no longer have to give their address, correct?
No, sir. It would actually be on the form.
It'd be on the form that we have.
Yes, sir.
They just state their name.
And the mayor wouldn't have to call out the address, just the name, and say, Mr. Jones, would you please be prepared to come up and speak to the council?
And the three minutes that we can discuss the other.
Yeah, we, we've been hearing that feedback for the last two and a half years, that people don't want to give their address and stuff, so I, I think that would solve that problem. I haven't heard anybody say, no, I hope everybody gives their address, so.
The, since it, except for the, the slide limit, which does not require any formal action, the others do that I've written down are revising the time from five to three minutes, twenty minutes for public hearings for each side, and then requiring a speaker registration form. Those do require amendments to an existing ordinance, so that would take two readings. So we can certainly bring that back. There could be further discussion, and then ultimately a decision on the first reading, and then we can bring back the second reading to you with any potential revisions that the council may discuss at the first reading.
Question, one last question. When you give your address at the podium, people can watch video, and that was the concern, that you can watch video and grab it, individual addresses. Is this susceptible to open records requests? So when they turn it in, can it be, so you're not just getting that one individual, you're getting a whole sheet, or can you ask for?
You couldn't redact anything on there unless there's something confidential, like your email address possibly, but your home address would not.
Thank you.
With concern to PII, personal identifiable information, do we have to collect an address? Can we just collect, like, the resident or just the street name, or?
No, I mean, there's, that's completely up to the governing body if you want to do away with the address, or change it to in, like, somebody was suggesting, you know, just.
Within city limits or outside city limits?
If you live in the city limits, or outside of the city limits, or district. Some people don't know what district they're, they live in, but they could get that information when they file their paperwork, their form with the city secretary, and they could identify at least what district they're in. That could be helpful when you deliberate and vote to know who you're hearing from. That's really up to you all. It's your, it's a tool for you to be better informed. It's, it's not to put the citizens at any kind of uncomfortable position, or concern for their own safety or their family's safety.
I, I think that we should be collecting the absolute minimum information that we need to do our job, and maybe that's just a district. I think that would be useful to me, but I would, I would love to err on the side of protecting our citizens' personal information.
I mean, I'm fine without the, I'm fine without the, excuse me. Can't hit the right button today. I'm fine without the address too. I don't lose a lot of value in that. The district thing, I think, is great, but I don't know the time, the logistics of that, right? I mean, some people know, some people, great knowing what district they're in, others are not, right? But, and staff could do, but you would need an address to know what district, right? I mean, so that's.
That's something that we certainly, certainly I think we could, we could ask. Do you reside within city limits? Yes or no? City council, district? If they don't know it, then we're not going to require that they fill it out.
I just think personally, I just may be on an island, but I think whether you're a city resident, ETJ, or other, to me, that's valuable information to know on that part.
If we can redact personal information, if it's like phone numbers, email addresses, and what have you can be redacted on, on an open records request, I'd like to keep that on there for the simple fact that if someone comes up, they have a concern, they're in my district, or what have you, I would like to be able to reach out to you or city staff and say, hey, can I have that individual's contact information, so I can reach out to them and get more information on that item, rather than somebody using a nefarious fact or way, I can use it to be, gather more information from, from a city resident. And I think having it as a district, ETJ, and city limits, without the address, if they, they so choose not to put that, would be beneficial, as Mayor Protem has stated. I'd like to know where their buy-in is on, on the topic at the podium.
If there's no other comments or questions for Mr. Camarino, with all presentations, we give the public an opportunity to speak. If you'd like to address this topic, please proceed up to lectern, please state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less.
David Warmke, 472C. As you might imagine, I have a lot of thoughts on this. Let me start out with time. Three minutes for the most part, I think is plenty of time for most people. Now, tonight, I had a narrative that I told you a story of something that went on, and I couldn't have done it in three minutes. So I think when somebody comes up, they could, having ability to request, can I have five minutes, I have a narrative, would be a good option to have. Second thing is lumping citizen communication and individual items together is the same. They're very different, and I think we probably have to treat those somewhat differently. Citizens' communications, you know, I, I think the registration is fine, it cuts out sometimes, there's no problem with that. The question is time limit, and I would hate to cut somebody off on citizen communication here, because they have something to say. And I would be cautious of that. I usually, citizen communication does not run that long, but I have been pleased to see more speak, more people speaking here and something to say. Now, when you get to the groups, two thoughts there. First thought is you typically have two groups that are opposing, and for the most part, you've got probably a spokesperson for each of those groups, and that would be the appropriate person to pick who's going to speak. You've seen that happen here with two or three presentations where you've had somebody checking off and lining up that went very good, and the same thing for the side that's opposing. I don't think you want to put that in the hands of yourself or your mayor, because you're just opening yourself up to a lot of flack, and that, and conflict of interest questions, and just, not good. But if you pick a representative from each side and say, okay, you're, you have, this is your timeline, your people up, make sure they're all registered, that, I think that would be a very efficient way to achieve that, that goal. Presentations, Toastmasters. I do a lot of Toastmasters speeches, five to seven minutes. And I tell you, when I sit here and I watch presentations, particularly some of the PowerPoints, you can't read anything, you can't see anything. It's not good. And I think if you had a time limit of five to seven minutes for somebody doing a presentation up here for a major item, that should be plenty of time to get your, get your work done. And the key there, really in PowerPoints, are slides, and slides usually have just bullet points on them, not a minutia of detail. When you put up a slide with a minutia of detail, it's, you get, it's just, it doesn't do anything. You've got to be able to filter out. Overall, you know, in the last five years I've been speaking here, it's gotten much better to, to speak here at city council, and it is a privilege to be able to speak and to give thoughts and to give insights, and I thank you for listening. I think registration is good. When we start picking people who can speak and who can't speak, that's, that can, that can turn into not good. And I would, I just think that's a bad path to go down for a multitude of reasons. But I'm down to a minute and fifty seconds, and in the theme of I can do it in three, I'm done. See ya. Thank you. God bless you. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Warmke, I would also like to point out that there are other ways to communicate with us. So I mean, if you have more to say, or you have a presentation, you can always send us an email, or we can talk on the phone, or, I mean, there's a lot of other methods for us to be able to communicate citizen, with citizens than just the three to five minutes.
This is sort of my, my thing. I can just kind of wait, and I email some, but I'm, I'm sort of not a back channel guy. I'm kind of, you know.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Greg Vittle. I live on 3172 Magnolia Manor here in New Braunfels. On what, I wanted to expound something on what the city manager was saying. As far as signing in on a sign-in sheet, you know, the city of New Braunfels is getting pretty big, and so you have to wait in a long line, write everything down, and everybody can see whose address is whose, and all that kind of stuff. And if you just do what the state capitol's doing, you have a really good IT department here, just run about two or three little computer kiosks out there, and they can just sign in and everything, and there's a comment section, and they can put down if they're for or against whatever amendment that you're, or a bill that you're trying to push through, and that kind of thing, and that'll cut down on a lot of the time. And then when they want to come up here and expound on something that's important, they could do it, and the three-minute rule is a good idea. So, all right, that's it. I don't have anything else. Y'all have a nice Christmas season and everything.
Thank you, sir.
I think that's a great idea, by the way.
Jim Holster, I guess I'll give my address, all right? 234 Elmwood Drive, New Braunfels, Texas. I really appreciate what you said about updating your IT to give ability for presenters to do a PowerPoint or whatever the presentation is, because that eats up time when you're walking over here and you have to do your paper. That really is, it's bringing us into the 21st century. So that's a great idea. Three minutes, I really, with PowerPoint presentations, I really don't have a, I might, you know, you can see occasionally you might need four minutes, but I could probably live with three minutes. The idea of you picking who gets to speak, terrible. That sounds like Twitter, the way he, you know, trying to decide who gets to speak on Twitter banning them. That's a bad idea. And if the mayor's going to, I don't care who's sitting in the mayor's seat, that is, that's really going against tradition here in New Braunfels. And, and so I hope you don't go down that route. Another idea is just, and there's probably a legal opinion on this, the consent agenda. When you, why do you read it every time after it's been, already been through the process? It's all published. Why couldn't you say the consent agenda is published? We'll prove it unless somebody wants some to pull, pull, but otherwise, you just read item by item. They choose that time. Opinion?
Well, just for the ordinances, the charter does require that they be read. The captions have to be read for the ordinances, even on consent. The charter doesn't really distinguish between consent.
Okay, well, I'm just curious, because it does seem to eat up, it seems to be a waste of time, you know? waste of time, you know? And, because usually, nobody pulls anything, right? So, it's already been gone over once. So, anyway, so if you, I guess it's just one of those things, free speech. So, please do not limit people who speak. And I don't know if this came up, because so many people came up when the utility bills that night. I don't know how many people there were, fifty, a hundred, that came up and spoke. And all of them probably said the same thing, but I think it was good for you to hear and envy you to hear, well, maybe what you're doing is not so good. Thanks.
Thank you. So, did you just speak on this item?
And I have a, still had a minute fifty. I forgot one item.
Can I give, bear with me. I'm happy to oblige that, but in the spirit of fairness, let me make sure there's nobody else, but I'll be happy to yield you back the time.
Okay.
I promise. But in the spirit of, we try to let everybody go through once, although I recognize you have a little bit under two minutes left. Anybody else like to speak on this topic? Okay, sir, the floor is yours.
My hips are good enough to do that. Now, one thing I didn't mention that I was going to mention is spontaneity. And we're coming up with a process that's very structured, and that kills spontaneity. You know, there are times I'll sit out back and I'll listen, and there'll be something I'm not planning on commenting on, but then something comes up and I comment on it, like that one night when we passed some bond issue things that were kind of an on-the-end thing that was unexpected. Yeah, I would hate not to be able to comment on that, because I didn't fill out a form in advance. So, you know, I understand registering, but I think somehow, we have to be able to preserve spontaneity, and that's something to consider and think. Thank you. God bless you. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Okay. See, nobody else approaching the lectern. We'll continue the meeting. Item number one, minutes. Item A, approval